There there's a couple various meetings that happen in there supervisors' meetings and then where people so I think they have the chair set up for whatever meeting.
Uh particularly if you're discussing something that might be of interest of specific parties who might be uh of interest.
Yeah. Right, it's like today our agenda doesn't have a lot of review on that, so if there was a lot of reviews you might have more people like the the property owners coming and their engineers and
Of course. Yeah, that makes sense.
Those people with the ten.
And and can I call you by your first names, Don- Dominic?
Yeah, sure.
You you do sort of erosion and land stuff, don't you um?
K P I is your township's engineer.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So I'm representing the township engineer for society.
Right, but did you, yes, yes, I know my
Yeah, so we do, yeah.
My son is building his house, I know he was dealing with it.
Right, and we'll do, we'll handle your stormwater or your E N S, but then any plans that come in, we review them if you need inspections, survey.
Yes. And that's why I was asking about what happened to Lottie, I was curious what was happening with Lottie, but they were.
Anything forward to township. Right. Now, I couldn't work for you while I worked for the township, that'd be a conflict.
Understood.
So just the township.
Yes, understood.
But do you do you have any background on planning or?
No, no, but I'm a sort of interested um person, I've lived here for a long time, um you know, we all squawk, we don't like what we see, but that doesn't mean that it might not be the best way to do something.
Well, you'll put it right down. Yeah. Yeah.
And I commend everybody who slays away trying to do the right thing, I mean. Now afraid not to have that.
Hands, hands, chair.
So far this is future, it's still potential payment that would be an ambitious moment.
Yes, well, I suppose, yes.
And Barb's here to keep us all straight, that's her job.
Right, we'll take notes.
That's right.
A relative of Ann Herbert?
Yes, no, yeah, my mother-in-law.
Yes. Oh, well, I'm so sorry, she doesn't do the artist tour anymore because I would really love to see uh the Fairfield Foot Trail, it's a digress.
Oh, the art tour, yes.
Yes, yes, the art tour, yeah, I've come across her over the years many times, yeah, and she's a fabulous artist.
Oh, good. Yes, yes, that's cool, to talk to you after the meeting, that's cool. Let me add a little girl, it's nice to have her here.
Well, they they have some more comments, they have the backup there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Behind the door. Did you get a copy? This is our agenda.
Uh, but um Wendy gave me one, she was anticip-
Okay, well, there there are more.
Anticipating I might actually come, she she was quite persuasive.
On that panel. Do we have more of that? Yeah.
Okay, so this is.
And more of that, we're gonna do.
Thank you. Don't you think, should I put her in with present or just put her in with public comment since she's not on the board, looking considerate?
Oh, it's just, yeah.
I'm not officially on the board or anything, I'm just a reporter definitely.
What whatever you might list to, yeah, the public comment.
There are two things.
I'm just a reporter at this point.
If she makes any public comments.
That's all right, I'll I'll go back and look it over and see, and so it's Beatrice Bowman?
Yeah.
Yes, B O W M A N, yes.
Okay, great. What's your address?
Nineteen Fruitwood Trail, and it sounds like I'm in Caribou Island.
Nineteen Fruitwood. Right, okay.
So do you know Judy Hogan? Judy Hogan?
Sounds terribly familiar.
Well, her property is not too far from you, but you get there a different way.
Oh, is she down over over, no, um.
You have to go up Walnut Trail and then down, and she actually kind of backs up to Friends Creek there in the ranch.
Down there, it's on the hill, okay, I'm up at the top of the hill, um and that farm I discussed, this is sort of hidden gem that nobody even knows about, it's it's it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't know Fruitwood was in Liberty Township.
It's not.
It's not, it's the same as Judy, the road, the road is owned by Carol Valley.
Oh, it's not. Okay, 'cause I looked up here. Yeah.
But that's the border, so once you, like, I'm assuming you're the same as Judy, once you go onto her driving, it's Liberty Township.
Yes, yes, and it used to be that we, the access used to be the old road up to the farm, but then when um the borough sorted themselves out.
Yeah.
They uh have legal access from uh.
Got it, right, it's true, 'cause the map was.
And I did actually pick up a few Caribou lots just to stop people building in front of me.
Anyway, Ju- Judy Hogan, who lives down there, she 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 was on the board until last year, at the end of the year, she
Name is really. Okay.
She's te- she's still on here as a um alternate, but so you mi- you might.
Okay. If ever she's at a meeting, uh do let me know, and I'll talk about it, she's almost a neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah, you probably brought rocks to each other.
Well, yes.
That'd be my problem, I suppose.
So I'm just trying to think what what her, so she's down by the creek, mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
It's off of Upper Trail.
We're down down, I I mean, I can remember Wendy, we should get through all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-nine, in that where I am now, since I'm now in that area, yeah.
Oh, goodness, okay, so longer than Judy got there, or or like it's farcism.
And I lived in Caribou Valley before then, so, yeah, don't be fooled by my accent, I've been in America since nineteen seventy-one, and I am a citizen.
Trying to remember when we came here, eighty, no, ninety-one.
I remember when the farm was just a ruin.
Ninety-three, that's it, my daughter was born right after we moved here, so.
When when Ann's farm was just a ruin, just a, was just a couple of walls and there's two dogs.
Exactly, they. Right, they finished it in nineteen eighty-nine, yeah, and then we bought the farm next to them in nineteen ninety-three, but any question?
Anyway, I don't I don't mean to, I don't give them your opinion.
I was after ninety-one, it's you.
Okay, okay. So, would I, which is, we start.
You call them, you call Earl. Earl, right, and then I call Earl, Rich, okay, Lisa Rich, uh Ken Faribault, Dominic Picarelli, and Pete Barbour.
Here. I don't really have any other comments of what's on the agenda. If you want, this may be a short meeting, because.
I'm five minutes wide, how far am I, minutes?
Yeah, so the minutes were distributed by Wendy um as an attachment. So we met on January twenty-first, did anybody have any comments regarding the minutes? Move to approve minutes. Anybody second? Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, did you say that either? Like said, I don't know if you have any additional com- this this is called public comment, so anybody, any anybody out there?
No. Carry on, carry on.
Okay, um so the old business, I wasn't sure if anybody was gonna be here to represent that, um.
No, the last time they were here, which is a few months ago, he sort of made mention that since the buildings aren't gonna change and everything is either stormwater related or house cleaning items, he's probably not gonna come back. So it's their project, the um.
Well, that round conservation one is the extension they got is probably about ended, I believe this is the president who, which began in December.
Okay. Um, yeah, and and in all honesty, with my review letter dated March fifth, does everybody have a copy of it? If you need a copy, I expect sure.
That was on.
That that I have it on my phone.
That that was on Wendy's page, right? There's there's a bunch of them. We don't have anything substantial left on the the plan.
Do you want to work with the plan, do you want to talk with? Maybe there's, you haven't worked with them.
Could be an idea, but. Yeah, we don't have anything um substantial left on the plan, uh we'll go, I'll go over all the comments really quickly, uh they have to sign the plan. They had to do with the conservation subdivision plat procedure, that's where they write that little article that they follow, they are asking for a waiver of that.
What is the policy generally with that?
Most people have done it, I don't know if anybody's asked for a waiver, it's usually just a uh one, a two-page write-up that answers the questions in the ordinance that basically states we built everything in the best location that would be less harmful to the environment, for lack of a better phrase, but there's a bunch of questions and things that they may talk about. And then those those were only subdivision comments, general comments, Liberty Township shouldn't uh approve the plan until Hamilton Van Township approves it, 'cause it's in both townships. So we're, and we are, we're working with Hamilton Van, yeah, well, each side has its own thing.
They're applying. Yes.
We sort of get all the stormwater and the sewage, and they sort of get the buildings, so it's, we're and we're working with Eric, he's the engineer for them, we're hand-to-hand, sending each other comments, working this out with also their engineer, um and then if they still have to, you know, finish off their conservation district review, getting their N P D S permit if required, et cetera. Then we have four stormwater comments, one is just a typical O and M agreement that they'll have to do, um the other three are pretty minor, we don't see them not being able to do it, just fixing a couple things, and even though we won't comment on uh Keller Engineering's letter, who is Hamilton Van's township, um it appears they're down to just a handful of minor, I shouldn't say minor, handful of stormwater comments, we reviewed them and we don't think it's gonna cause any issue, but we're not their engineer. And they have some, again, what maybe I'll just say minor subdivision comments that they have to do, again, we're not their engineer, and you so look, nothing major, I mean, they are signing the plan, pay your rec fees, you know, have it looked at by the fire chief, the conservation district, N P D S, so even some boards are saying comments. If you wanted to make a motion to conditionally approve the plan based on K P I's letter, I would not object.
I'm not, I I don't like him doing that, I'm delighted to tell. Well, the one thing that you mentioned here, and so does Hamilton Van, that they should address the county's comment, and I don't know that they still do that. There there was one of the previous letters they did, where they said they were gonna talk to the county and all that, and I was kind of wondering, did they ever even talk to them, because.
Well, well, county did re-review it, we got their letter, we just got it.
But they still have outstanding comments.
Quite a few.
So my point is, back in, I forgot when the, if it was in, it was one of the previous letters we got from their engineer. It said that they intended to coordinate, it was in response, I think, to your comment, where you said that they needed to address the county comments, and they just said, who are we talking to? But I'm not sure they did.
I I understand what you're saying.
I I think they need to.
But when does it look like the Hamilton Van will approve?
I I don't know, I re- I really, I don't know, I'm trying to think.
So there's very real urgency in doing that this evening.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, no, you don't have to, you can always table it again if you want, I just uh, I don't know when Hamilton Van Township's planning commission meeting is, I don't know if it's, I'm I'm gonna just assume it's after ours, but it could potentially already happen, I don't know.
And and their letter says to coordinate with the office of county planning, and I believe they mentioned in their stormwater comments that they wanted to make sure that they addressed Liberty Township's concerns. Yeah. Yeah, it says Hamilton Van Township will not approve the plan until confirmation has been provided by Liberty Township, that the stormwater management still is depicted within the municipality are acceptable. So then I can prove it till we say this stormwater stuff's better.
So that's to be determined, yeah.
Okay, their next, Ham- Hamilton Van Township's next planning commission meeting is Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, based on um their website. And again, I'm I'm almost as much as that as well.
So so since the stormwater management part, a lot of it's on ours, what needs to be done by them to address those issues at this point?
Uh, for us, just those three comments we had, which is, they they did a mathematical error, number one basically says they put a building up, but they're saying they have less impervious now than they did prior, so I know, we know it's a mathematical error, and you just can't do that. And that's all it really is, is just changing the report to put the right number in, not, that won't affect anything else. The E N S plan should, this is number two, should provide, should be provided to verify that adequate slope protection matting is proposed. E N S goes to the county, we sort of give it a re- we review it, you know, um but it's ultimately approved by the county, and there was just something that they had marked on our plan, we just wanna make sure that they're using the right matting. And then number three is um the spillway, they're using the wrong one, uh basically, but they're using, spillways are usually flat, you know, so water hits it and it all goes over, and this one's like a V shape, so we're just using the wrong one. And then the O and M agreement, which is a very typical thing, so again, in our mind, there are three minor changes that they should easily be able to handle. That's our, that's my opinion, I or our opinion, the engineer.
So do we provide conditional approval of the stormwater plan, do we recommend?
Well, the stormwater plan is a part of the land development plan. Sometimes we get them separately, like a s- like a single-family house, you know, they come and it just comes directly to us, when you approve the land development plan, part of that is, of that plan is the stormwater management plan, so after this would get approved, they wouldn't come back and say, gee, approve my stormwater management plan, it's already been approved as with the land development plan, that'll be recorded and everything.
So who confirms that this all has been done correctly, the stormwater stuff?
We will.
We will.
Yeah.
But you're thinking, Rich, that we don't conditionally approve, 'cause then how does this thing ever get going, though, if we don't approve it and they don't approve it till we approve it, who who decides?
So, I.
Yeah.
Well, no, I I mean, but one point, these comments are, were they reflected on your previous comments, or are they all new?
I just feel like they're not doing new kills, they're trying to put that thing together, we're giving them comment to live.
I mean, they're getting better than they were, where they had all these big buildings drawn up there that weren't on the original.
They can slowly.
They're a building now, I did a lot of stormnades up on the Capitol.
So the last letter from January twenty-ninth, um no, no, I'm sorry, from our letter in October, one, two, three. The general comments uh were down, we had nine. We had seventeen stormwater comments, plus some of those comments had subsections to them, uh.
So those have all been addressed at this point?
Yeah, we're down to four, and I'm not gonna say that these four comments may be new, they may be leftover.
Well, why why couldn't we conditionally approve the, this plan based on the the uh them addressing these four?
I said, they talked to the company, more work they got.
Well, they had to get a permit, they have to get their N P D S permit, so to me, that's acceptable response there, it's 'cause it doesn't matter what I say or what Hamilton Van Township says, Adams County Conservation District approves a permit, there's, I mean, we give our comments.
And they're not gonna give approval if these things aren't met, is that correct?
Right, well, the N P D S permit is for E N S measures, erosion is heavily controlled, we're, we, township engineer, will approve the stormwater.
Okay.
Okay, they work hand-in-hand, because usually where you're putting in stormwater, you're gonna have your E N S and blue grading, et cetera, but the county just sort of addresses E N S, but they're gonna look at us about stormwater as well, whereas we address just stormwater, but we also look at the E N S as well, because they just, they they're intertwined.
If we wouldn't approve it tonight, what what will that mean for them?
If you did a conditional approval based on our letter, then it just goes to the board supervisors, they still have to revise things to meet the rest of our comments and the comments of Hamilton Van. If we got down to, if we got down to like, hey, sign the plan, get Hamilton Van Township's approval and get an O and M agreement, we're, and they conditionally approve it that way, we're still waiting for Hamilton Van to approve it, that's why we said, don't sign it until they approve it, and then once both approve, then everybody will start signing it, they'll get signatures from everybody.
Because we're not signing anywhere, we're we'd be conditionally approving, sending it to the supervisors with with, for them to know that these items have to be addressed.
That's right. Yes. Yes.
So so we're not moving anything forward, it's the supervisors that will.
Right, technically, this board doesn't approve anything, you recommend approval or denials or whatever you wanna recommend, the supervisors will make the ultimate decision.
Right. Have you read the county's comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see anything there that's significant?
No, most of them, to me, frankly, were about Hamilton Van stuff, um you know, we could go over them quickly, reiterate previous comment about tree removal near the stormwater facilities, uh proximity building to stormwater management facilities, which those are more in Hamilton Van's side. Comments identifying steep slopes in Hamilton Van Township, and that we covered, that was two, parking lot in Hamilton Van Township. The conservation area for Liberty Township, that's out of the zoning, and the last we ever heard from the zoning officer was he was okay with everything. If this wants to, if they wanna send it back to the zoning officer to take a double look, but the last we got from the zoning officer is he was okay with everything, so I don't supersede your zoning officer. Comment about land development plan and requirements at Hamilton Van Township. In summary, it does not include changes that we anticipate would need to address various comments, but given that the comments involve ordinance issues in both townships, we question if the revision meets all requirements for Hamilton and Liberty, so even in Liberty, uh Adams County comments, there's really only one comment that they have left at Liberty Township. Again, not to say it's not important, but they're refer- they're asking the zoning officer to do something, and the last time the zoning officer looked at all this, he gave the approval, so.
I'm making a motion to conditionally approve uh sending to the to the supervisors with the caveat that there's there's conditions in that.
That all conditions of this letter, right?
Mm-hmm, right. So we're kind of over time, I'll put it, so it's my whole comment, same K P I's letter.
Right.
Hmm?
I seconded, so then we talked about it, I'm just wondering if I seconded, right, I seconded.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
What about this um?
What?
Waiver that request?
Well, they never formally asked for it, so, and that was part of our comment, they just said, we'd like a waiver in the comment letter, but you have to formally ask for a waiver. So they have to fill it out or put in a letter that formally asks for a waiver, um as far as I'm concerned, until they do that, there's nothing pre- really.
They have asked for a waiver.
If they if they ask, if we conditionally approve it and ask for a waiver, will waivers come to us still?
It should, I mean, unless the supervisors decide not to to just move it forward, but it should. And you could, if you so choose, you could preemptively say now, you know, if they request the waiver, we say either yea or nee, you could do that now. Um, or you could just say, conditionally approve it, however, if they request a waiver, we would like the opportunity to make a recommendation on it, um. That would be, again, you have your choice.
Well, we can amend the motion to say that if we, either we don't recommend approval of the waiver, or the request that the waiver be, uh any waiver request we sent us, review. I mean, from what you said, I don't see why we should have heard the waiver, and most people do it, and it's not.
I, yeah, I don't know if we've ever granted.
And what's the word, specifically, this waiver?
So. Um, Farvick, what's the section number on that?
Two seven five dash three oh six dot C dot M.
Okay, so two seven five dash three oh six, so you have what's called the conservation subdivision plat procedures, and it's one, two, three, four, little over four pages where it says, when you do, and I'm just gonna try and condense it, when you do a plan, you need to tell us, and it's usually just a page or so that says, yeah, we looked, and sometimes a little map that'll go with it, yeah, we looked at this area, but it has wetlands, we didn't disturb it, we looked here, it has steep slopes, we didn't disturb it. Over here is a pond or a stream, we stayed this far away, just sort of putting in writing that you took into account all the environment and tried to situate your buildings in the best manner for the betterment of the environment.
So that's the report that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, that, so they need to just write out what?
Basically.
Maybe if we gave a waiver, they wouldn't have to do that.
They wouldn't have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right, and they're they're, I don't know what, they never asked formally, they're probably gonna say, well, the building's already built. That's, I mean, that's.
Buildings.
Right, I mean, if I was on their side, I'd say, well, they're already built, I don't, and that doesn't make a problem, it doesn't mean you have to get away with it, you give them way with it.
But it's.
Does this whole thing only deal with buildings, or does it deal with the stormwater management too?
Uh, it won't deal with the stormwater management, and if it did, I mean, I'm sure there might be some stuff in here about that, but if it did, again, that stormwater management's been built for twenty years already. So most of that stuff is existing, it's, they put up a couple, they wanna put up a couple more buildings, redo some of their parking, and making sure that what they have in stormwater from twenty years ago can handle the new stuff. And then I think there's also another little area that they're putting in into Hamilton Van Township to handle some of the stormwater, 'cause we don't have enough capacity without them making it even bigger, or doing. Cause we don't have enough capacity without them making it even bigger or doing something more. So they overbuilt it a little bit twenty years ago and they're sort of gonna use up the space that's available and then their other stuff.
But buildings in Liberty.
Yeah, so approximately, now, when they did this twenty years ago, the building was all supposed to be in Hamilton van township. And we were supposed to get the stormwater and the and the septic. And that's the way it's always been until this plan came by, what, about two years ago? And the county said that there's something wrong with the the township lines. And now they, I guess, fixed it and now the line goes through the existing building. Which we never would have allowed twenty years ago, but now it's it's there. Not much you can do about it now. And again, that came from the county, cause again, twenty years ago, neither this township nor Hamilton man made any, nor the county said anything about that boundary line.
Mm-hmm, about where it had to be.
Right.
That there was a.
It popped up at this point.
And I know there's other places with boundary lines are fairly produced.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, then, I I guess to some extent, we don't need to say anything.
That's fine.
Because if if they submit the waiver and it comes to us, we can decide that or and if they submit straight to supervisor.
I guess we can.
They can be okay with supervisors submitting.
Since the supervisor said waiver's okay, then it's okay, right? So you have to, supervisors can do anything.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, there, it doesn't sound like there's any strong reason why we have to insist it comes back to us.
Never mind. Does it, that we insist that it comes back to us, there's not real reason.
That we have. Right.
I mean.
Because some would still.
So we we don't need to pre approve something and it hasn't happened yet.
Right. And I mean, I was hesitating because you were worried, you know, that there were so many comments to address, but from what we're saying, it sounds like
Yeah.
there are far fewer than there were, you don't seem to think they're a big deal. And again, conditional approval that we recommend means that that they still all have to be addressed and then it can be told.
Mm-hmm.
It seems that it would.
Yeah, all that we're doing is saying to the supervisors, we're conditionally approving.
Yeah, make sure if they do everything.
If they do anything, then then you guys are good to say.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, part of the conditional approval is that Hamilton man, that should be in the motion, that Hamilton man has to prove first. Or no.
Well, they said we should not unconditionally, but they need us to approve the stormwater.
Well, they need us.
Right, well, I.
I don't understand when that is.
See, I wrote it, I wrote it specifically to say you should not unconditionally approve the plan. Reason being is the supervisors at the very end, even if everything's done perfectly, should still say. We prove it with the condition that Hamilton man township approves this plan.
Hamilton man.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's why I wrote it to say you should not unconditionally approve this plan.
Right.
Got it. But they and then they could, Hamilton ban could look at that and go, well, it looks like they've approved, like they're good as long as they're good. Okay, okay.
Yeah, eventually, if it gets into that, someone will cave and just say, hey, this is good.
Right, that sounds like, that's kind of what I thought, let's just, yeah.
Someone will claim, uh, it's good. Yeah.
Okay, thanks for explaining everything.
Yeah.
So reread the motion, just so we're all.
Yeah, um, Ken Faribault, motion to recommend conditional approval uh of to recommend to the supervisors. I think how I would say it is, motion to recommend that the board of supervisors conditionally approve the plan based on satisfying all, I said all issues, all comments in KPI's letter of March fifth, twenty twenty five. And I can highlight it.
It's a fair comment, but.
I I mean, I think that covers everything.
Mm-hmm.
Because you say right here, Liberty should not unconditionally approve it. And I assume you're gonna explain to the supervisors, if you haven't already, that that's how it works.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll talk to my.
But.
Yeah, well, that took a lot longer than I thought.
Yeah.
Can can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is there any kind of, in a situation like this, any kind of liaison between Hamilton van and you guys?
Well, it's been.
Do you do, do you do go to O N P Gs?
Right, I I talked to him and emailed him and all, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you, sorry.
I mean, other issues, other issues we might be more involved in that, but normally for these kind of things.
Thank you.
Okay, then that's that's fine, that's, that's off to my question, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So all in favor?
All right.
opposed? Here we go, position, please. So the other issue on the agenda.
Two.
Yes, um. The supervisors have asked us to review. Well, one thing, it first of all, they've come in and bugged the update on the Adams County Southwest Compliments of Plan. So far, there has been no action whatsoever. Rob Thaler at the county asked us for whether or not the, I think it's six municipalities that are part of that.
The rare topics of that thing now, because I didn't receive it.
Was it in their packet, the marketing memo?
This.
She's.
She sent it on the, the the P D F that's got the agenda, there's there's like six, eight pages to it.
It's out.
Oh.
And it has all that under stuff and lumbered out on it.
Oh, okay. You're talking about the one that says that they want us to look at accessory apartments.
Yeah.
Regulations for Airbnb and multifamily housing. Right, is that the 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 memo that you're looking at?
Right. Right. And you were at that meeting?
I was, I was at that meeting.
Do you have anything more insight to add of what they were getting at or what was they?
Well, what they were saying is that we're getting these Airbnbs and we don't have anything to control it. And and they're not, I mean, you're not getting any taxes increased from what they're doing, I mean, it's.
What I what I can say is, I didn't talk to none of the supervisors. What I will say generally speaking, in Pennsylvania, especially in Adams County, so I'm working with several municipalities as we speak. Um, accessory apartments, Airbnb, i.e. short term rentals was what we call them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you don't have multifamily housing, but we can hit that up. Medical marijuana and the four uses that are associated with that and the mega warehouses. Those are seem to be the hot topic issues direct and solar, but you guys took care of solar a couple of years ago, thank you, Rich. Uh, those are like the hot topic issues that are hitting a lot of the municipalities in the area right now. So, I mean, the way I read this memo and I could be wrong, is they want us to look at these plus if there's any of these other hot topic issues.
Right.
And then try to just do a little, if we know anything that's wrong with the ordinance and just generally speaking, that's causing us issues, we should probably make mention of it. That's the way I gathered it.
Right, and and he was, they were talking about uh on this accessory apartments, uh individuals that have family that they would like to ha- uh maybe mother-in-law type thing, that they'd be able to add a section on in right now, we don't have provisions.
Well, you just, you could do one of two things, you can go with just pure accessory apartment, anybody can live there. Or you could go with basically in-law quarters is what these call them, or granny flats, or just for family members only. Um, and then if not, everybody gets an accessory apartment, just for family members only. I I'm I'm okay, I've seen it both ways and I'm okay with the family members only, but I'll I'll give you, this is the reality. You do it for your mom, you do it for your dad, you spend a bunch of money to do it and then everybody passes on and now you're looking at this apartment that you spent thousands of dollars on and you go, well, I get nothing out of this now. So I can't rent it, it has to be a family member. So I noticed the trend now is they're just getting rid of these granny flats, in-law quarters, whatever, they're just going strictly accessory apartments. Okay, county will tell you, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree, that that is a form of the housing uh to to do in your part for the housing market, affordable housing, et cetera, because depending on how you write your ordinance, almost every single lot out there can now have an accessory apartment. Unless you just put it in certain zoning districts or something, if you say, a house can have accessory to that. You you almost doubled your housing space out there overnight, not saying it's strictly there, they have to build it and get permits and everything, but if you have a house, you can have an accessory apartment. Um, and you assume those, that would be cheaper than building a house. So there is the aspect that maybe it's not home affordability, but affordability and not owner.
What if what if, what if we got information from you, okay, about some of the things that are being done?
I.
Yeah.
So that we could take a look at them and then talk to the supervisors and get their thoughts on it.
But I mean, that's where our experience would go, is we we need, if if you know that there's other people, other municipalities that are doing this or already have accommodations.
Almost, I've worked with Rob Thaler on with three different municipalities currently on almost every one of these, so I can just steal counties and bring you counties.
That's fine.
Uh, where you can then massage them to newer township.
Well, it's interesting, I had just read, um, cause I'll admit, I didn't get as far as this, but this is an issue that I've been reading up about. Uh, the Emmett's for Dispatch just had an article on accessory dwelling units and whether and how municipalities want to allow them. Um, I'm been attending meetings of the At Home in Adams County Coalition, the Housing Coalition meeting. Basically trying to look at housing, affordable housing, transportation and economic development to improve quality of life here. And in the in the county, affordable housing is a huge problem. And just what I've been reading more of is, right, this accessory dwelling unit or apartment might be a solution. Uh, again, I mean, there'll be, there'd be regulations, but they'd be smaller, cheaper. And I I think another consideration for not limiting it to family is that in reality, sometimes, um, what if two widows need to live together? Or like you said, you built it for your mother-in-law, she passes on, I mean, just just because you're not related, doesn't mean.
Right, you define family.
Right, that you could.
That's that's the hard part that attorneys don't wanna mess with.
Right, right, and you could help out, but apartment, it's limited, you know, you can limit how many people can live there.
Yep.
But but anyway, it just seems really important to, um, do you, Don, what exactly do they mean by multifamily housing?
I'm gonna assume he's talking about like uh townhouses or something to that nature.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, so, okay, just not sa- as opposed to single family homes?
I think I just. Yes.
Got it, okay.
But you have to, what what kind of lots, for example, what kind of lots would you be able to build on?
I mean, what kind of pieces of property?
Well, I mean.
Would it, would a lot of this ultimately, especially in your township, ultimately, a lot of this falls down onto do you have proper uh sewage disposal? Meaning you all have oil lot septic system, you have no public sewer.
Right.
So that makes a hindrance for accessory dwelling units and it's gonna, and it makes a hindrance for townhomes.
Sure.
Because they're typically either really small chopped up lots or it's one lot with like, um, uh, I forget, basically you buy a house, but there's like an H O A that covers. But you, but once we get a little bit deeper and I tell you about how the septic systems work, you know. I mean, you have a single family residence and you wanna put a one bedroom garage to get through D E P for me to give you a permit as your S E O. That one apartment garage has to be built for another single family residence, minimum three bedroom house. When I tell Barb, hey, you're gonna spend twenty thousand to fix up your garage, you're gonna spend forty thousand on a septic system, their heads explode. Cause they go, well, I can't afford that, I'm barely ca- you know, I mean, but that's the reality of the situation is. So again, I'm not saying you won't get these in if.
Well, they would have been part of the warm old plan.
Is if that one, whatever.
With child development sewage plan, so.
Yeah, but that's right, that's that's a different situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So and multifamily can also just be two or three homes, it's usually more than one. You know, they're, you know, duplexes or, you know, duplexes side to side or duplexes above and below, you know.
Which would be different.
What about regulations on Airbnbs, what, how how are people addressing that?
Uh.
Cause that's one of the things that they just.
You can, you can really get in deep with it, meaning having like three, four different uses, like Gettysburg-Berber does, where they have everything. Really, your biggest thing is what kind of Airbnb do you, what kind of short term rental do you want? I mean, will you only allow owner occupied? So I mean, do you have to actually be there when you rent these rooms? Or you you can have both, an un- owner unoccupied? Which lots times you might see someone who maybe their parents died, now they have a second home, instead of just selling it, they say, oh, Airbnb it. They're not there, they're not living in a house, it's constantly a rental. And then you have some corporations that do that as well, so you can handle it for both of them or you could just say, no, ours are only going to be owner occupied.
Well, they said that they they know six or seven of these that are being done.
Yeah, there's.
There's three on our road.
Yeah.
Across the street from Ann's and, um.
Now, are they, or the, is he on there?
Oh, no. Yeah.
Uh, okay, so they just rent out rooms that are.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's.
But the question, when they had their discussion, they were interested in being able to tax those?
So.
Or, see, that that, I'm not sure.
Well, here's the other part is Airbnb, I know Airbnb has made their site a little bit more stringent where they, I think they have to get a permit through the county, so once the county sniffs up, the county's gonna start the taxes. But it may not hit the township, I don't know how that stuff works.
I'm not sure, uh, county township tax, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, because they would have to get a permit and it would then.
So they have, so so an Airbnb within our township has to go to the county for a permit?
Yes, if you're on Airbnb's website, not all short term rentals.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why we tr- that's why we're really trying to get away from where, and we all say it, shouldn't be seeing Airbnb, cause that's.
Yeah. Cause there are different, there are different outfits.
That's Pepsi, we're talking about soap, you know?
Yeah.
So we're talking about short term rentals. And short term rentals can go from, um, a one day overnight or I read my, like, if if we live at the beach, but that doesn't mean people can't do it, weeks at a time, you know, one week, one week to someone else, that could be a short term, you define short term rental. Um, and if you say, well, I want two things, I want something for a short term rental that's only one or two days and I want something for I guess not short term rental, but like on a weekly basis, like you would when you go on vacation to the beach. But people come to Gettysburg to go and rent a house for a week, you know? And you might be getting that out here, I mean, you do a ski slopes and so, so I get it why you could be, you know, foreign land, ski slopes. Yeah, you're primed for a nice little Airbnb, people come out and see the country life and go skiing or doing, taking a drive to Gettysburg, so I I get it.
But I think it's also a good touch back on the thing that we have reported about somebody wanting to park a camper on my property.
Yeah, that was, that's a little bit different, that's a vacant piece of land to throw a camper and we, and our, what was our concern? Where do they do it, their sewer?
No, but I'm I'm saying, at my house, if I've said, hey, you can park a camper there and we'll run sewer line over the septic. I I'm just, they put some regulations.
It just opens a whole bunch of stuff that I'm thinking about.
It does.
A few years back, when they put that camper trailer in across the road from me, they they changed some regulations on it.
That we discussed that a bunch, I think you were just gotten on here and they went after what they asked.
Yeah.
That's okay, we we we've had a discussion about.
Yeah.
We have a camper.
We've all, what all was in there, but it's a certain amount of coffee you can be in your camper.
Yeah.
And our fam had these, I don't know, forget what all was, they they did update it.
Yeah.
Maybe we oughta have supervisors come here to say, specifically, exactly what do you want us to do here, right?
I I think the first step, if we can get stuff that the county.
For the accessory.
Yeah, I I think the first step, if we can get stuff that the county's already done for us to look at.
Yeah.
For the accessory, yeah.
So, I mean, as far as apartments, I I tend to agree, and I thought about this before even we came here, that I would make it so it's just accessory apartments and eliminate anything dealing with family, and that, part of the reason is
Uh, how?
if I built an apartment for a family member and for some reason they moved away or passed away, whatever, I'm probably making arrangements to rent it out, whether the township knows about it or not.
Right.
Well, like you said.
But that's what's happening with these with these, uh, what he said, Air- Airbnbs.
Yeah.
That's exactly what some people.
So, I I I question whether if you put a bunch of restrictions on it about who can live there, if it's enforceable, it's, I don't I don't see it's enforceable.
How do you enforce it, right? Like you just say, oh yeah, this is my cousin.
Well, yeah, and and we've, I've talked to many attorneys, they don't wanna touch it.
Yeah.
Because you have to either get so specific or who's ever gonna say, you and your neighbor's kids grew up together and they're not family?
I think you just.
No way, no attorney wants to touch it.
Right, you just go with occupancy, like maybe.
Where.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, as far as enforcement goes, that's one of the things that the supervisors brought up, is that they've spent so much money so far this year on enforcing various things, okay, and their their budget's pretty well shot. So, who's going to enforce?
Right.
And at what cost?
Yeah.
Right.
And and I believe the zoning officer is technically our enforcement officer, and.
If 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 it, yeah, everyone's.
Well, and I'm trying to get back, when when the planning commission was asked before to just develop recommendations for, you know, the uh mobile homes and things. I think how what we came down to, because again, we're not the experts, I mean, we're looking at this, but we need an engineer or an expert to tell us how you would actually write an ordinance. So, I think what we would do is get your information and then just maybe come up with bullet points, like the planning commission recommends that you generally, you know, allow it for anybody, maybe no more than this people, amount of people or whatever, no more than this size. I I don't know, just some general parameters, like here's what we think it's important to consider, and then we recommend that you have whatever, a zoning professional writing something that reflects that. I mean, I I think that would be ours, rather than, I just, we don't have the expertise to debate, well, should it be that you allow two people or four people, or that it should be whatever, forty by sixty or no more than fifty by seventy, you know, to get into those key.
Uh. Yeah, some of the things I think, and I don't have numbers, but like, to me, if you have an accessory apartment,
Right.
it should be smaller and how much smaller, I don't know, than the original house.
Right.
Like, you don't know.
Usually they go about fifty percent, unless it's an existing detached structure.
So.
So, if you already have a garage on there.
That you're redoing.
Go right ahead, but if it's a new building or being added on or convert maybe the garage that's on your house, I think we have, I think the ones I've seen from the county, or I think fifty percent of the structure.
Yeah, so I think that, and you may wanna restrict it, so you have to have a lot size of certain, um, size.
Yeah.
Which is partly good, your septic requirements may drive that too, I don't know.
Oh. Septic's the second they say apartment, that's it, I mean, I.
What what I'm saying, if they have a suitable place to put a septic, and if you have to.
Oh, right, right, right.
You're gonna need a water lane and be able to do it.
Right, yes, yep, they're gonna need the lane.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, what I'll do is, I I will pull information on these things, um, and I will either get them to Wendy
Okay.
prior to the next meeting or bring it for the next meeting.
If we can get it before, and then you still have to change the plans.
I, right, no, I understand, I'll I will, I will really try to get them to Wendy.
But I don't think, I don't think the supervisors were asking for something next month.
Well, I I didn't think, they should know better.
I mean, as of as of right now, you probably won't have a meeting unless the plan comes in, you probably won't have a meeting next.
Well, if we have enough stuff to talk about this, that's just occasion to have a meeting.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
I mean, the only time we cancel it is if we don't really have agenda items, but this could be, this is a substantial agenda item.
Right.
And the same thing for all three areas, any similar info you can send us, like what have you been doing?
Well, that would be a time to.
Yeah, the other ones, it's just the hot topic ones, or the.
That would be a time to like, and supervisors will attend too to.
Arizona warehouse.
Hear what we're talking about.
You hear what they're talk, we're talking about and and make sure that we're on the same page.
That's a really good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
And you g- and you guys all have my email address and, um, if something pops into your mind, just driving down the road and going.
I'll s- I'll look.
Yeah, we have to figure this out, let me know, just ask me, just say, hey, you have any info on whatever, you know?
I'll send you guys the link too.
And I'll see what kind of info I have and try to pull it.
Yeah, I I was even thinking with apartments, if somebody's got a house with a finished basement that has an exterior entrance to it, it's a trivial thing possibly to just.
Yeah.
isolate the basement and rent that out as an apartment and they never come in and ask for anything.
Mm-hmm.
I know, until the neighbor complains, that's where it happens.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And and we.
We have more victims sitting outside.
We may wanna have restriction on how much parking they have to provide and change things.
They will, they, yeah, that stuff all, right, they have to provide for all that. Um, and and then usually you get the little catch-all of you have to get a building permit from U C C, building code, yeah? And then they're gonna make sure that you have a proper ventilate, like a window, make sure you have access to the outside, things like that.
Well, ultimately.
You know, where it can't, it can't be an apartment.
Ultimately, if the person in the apartment decides to get insurance, the insurance don't label probably, let me see all that.
Right. But it's it's amazing how we find out about this, I'm dealing with it now, a guy put in an apartment and he got busted because he went to the county and asked for a a new address for the apartment. And so the township got notified and they said, what do you mean? Why do you have an apartment?
Yeah, but.
Here's what you have, uh, you put out writing that you wanted a new address and you have no permits and you can't be doing this and, yeah, so.
So.
I can think of it.
As far as what to put in the minutes or plan, you're gonna get information on all three to us. We're going to invite the supervisors to the next meeting where we discuss this? Or not?
But if we have it, if we have it at that time.
Whatever, well, I mean, to whatever the next regular meeting, I mean, we're not gonna have a special meeting or anything, but we're just gonna, we're just gonna aim to get background information.
No, no.
Yeah.
Come with our ideas and invite supervisors to the next agenda on that.
I I, may- maybe not in the minutes, but I think someone, it's usually you, I guess, it was you in your chair. Someone's, someone should talk to supervisors and find out, when they, when when you're gonna do this, are you gonna do this as the planning commission meeting? As the planning commission during planning commission meetings? Or are you gonna, which is as simple as just saying that, we're gonna do a zoning committee workshop and you all now become the zoning committee?
Workshop.
It it's still open to the public and stuff, but it's, there's no voting, there's no nothing, and anybody can show up and then supervisors want, they might even say, I'll be a part of the zoning committee and we'll all talk about it, um.
Because this is a zoning issue, correct?
It, this stuff is gonna be in the zoning ordinance, yes.
It is something. Right.
And in that way, what happens is you cancel the planning commission meeting, but you still show up as a zoning workshop. And you don't have to take, you don't have to take minute notes, I mean, you take them for your own personal, nothing is official, you're just a zoning committee
Oh.
looking at the ordinance.
Ask the k- ask the supervisors, okay, what kind of meeting?
Should the zoning officer be there?
Typically, they, just typically, a zoning officer should show up to offer their input, to say, I don't like this, I like that, or let's do it this way, let's do it that way, yes.
Right. Right.
We may not have formal minutes, but we can record these.
And that's fine.
But I see what you're saying, it's not, right, we're not, it's not a meeting where we're gonna come up with a motion or anything official.
It's a workshop.
Right, no.
It's a workshop.
It's, I like that idea.
Yeah, workshop.
There's no voting, nothing, it's just doing what we're doing right now without voting and without taking, you wanna take your own stuff, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do you wanna ask the supervisors if they wanna do that?
I'm just wondering whether or not we should get this information from the county and go over it first by ourselves and then do that.
Okay.
Also look at that Southwest Adams, what we would recommend for that also, at the same time, and the Southwest Adams that.
The joint, I mean, the existing joint.
Yeah, that's a joint plan.
I think this is info, right, that you would bring back to them if they ever met again, right?
Yeah. That that's the whole thing, and it's Rob Thaler that, he agreed, there was, there was a limited amount of updating that they were gonna do because the county is funding it. And the only thing that the townships have to fund is if we have to have, you know, formal meetings and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, that there's a cost, but that that should be minimal cost. But if they go into a full-blown update of that plan, then all the municipalities are gonna have to pitch on one meeting, and I don't think that's gonna happen.
But I think what you're saying is we, and I agree, we should coordinate, like, if we are considering some of these issues which impact our county's joint plan and vision for the future, which includes, you know, affordable housing, but in a way that respects the character of our community, we should have some way for sharing what our township is doing with the people who are updating the plan, right?
Well, I was saying, if you're gonna talk about ideas for a particular township, you could discuss that at the same time. You know, same thing, ideas, what what you wanna do.
Yeah.
So, I thought, you know, about, um, under that plan we was looking at, um, the with the, uh, they had that court where on, or court case. We never got the, uh, what.
Oh, the Warmold plan.
Right, but you know, just thinking about that, what would, um, look at with the, um, individual, the, uh, public sewer that we thought this water treatment plan, right, with that.
I think your comp plan came after Warmold, I would assume that they took into consideration Warmold with the last comp plan.
I think so, from what I remember, Judy was saying and everyone, that our our township zoning and the people who worked on that joint plan
Yeah.
Yeah.
were really influenced by Warmold and trying to account for just what you're saying, like, oh, if we have a big development, how do we want it to be?
Right.
Right, before, like, like the, before it happened.
And.
Yeah.
Right.
We're not just gonna end up like with the camper trailer falls from it, cause now you're not gonna, the regulations aren't gonna be there to to direct us, and then they will say, well, no, we're saying they can't, and.
Well, and this is, well, I guess this is getting more into that, but like if you want, say, transportation and walkability and all, I mean, I I don't even know if this is getting too out of the mainstream, but I think part of Warmold originally, they wanted like a little supermarket or a commercial center with stuff around it, and in the way that's.
Yeah. That that changed a lot from what they wanted.
It changed a lot, but the way we have these subdivisions here and everyone has to drive over there to the store, I mean, I I don't know, maybe, you know. The, but that's all I think getting into things that are not included in the scope of work in the comprehensive plan, yeah. So, we'll just look for stuff, and I'll send that article.
Well, for right now, I'm saying, let's just get some more background information and then, um,
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I can't clear the supervisors if they have a hopeful timeline to get something done. I don't, I think this is, it takes an effort. And there may be pieces there that can be done quickly, and I don't know, I'm saying, um, if anything. Are there any more discussion topics on that or anything else that's not on the minutes, or the agenda? Otherwise, somebody could motion for adjournment.
All those days.
Fine. So, at the moment, we still have a meeting scheduled for April, unless it gets canceled, right?
Yeah. But if we don't have anything, we can say, we're still gonna meet, but it's gonna be later.
Uh, you can, yeah, you can.
We we will, we don't necessarily meet at.